...of the school committee meeting for August 27, 2018. Please rise for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Moment of silence. Thank you. The listing of matters on the agenda, those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed in fact may be discussed and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being videotaped for cable. You have a motion to approve our minutes from the June 4, 2018 meeting?
Moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Dr. Oakley?
Yes. Summer update. This is usually, well, this is our end of the summer meeting. It's usually before teachers go back, but we did have the beginning day for teachers today, but over the summer we ended up hiring about eighteen new staff members and that's from instructional assistant, principals, you know, administrators, teachers. So, that's big for us, but if you remember, we had a lot of retirements last year was a big retirement year and then just some changes here and there, people moving up and going to different districts. So, eighteen that, I think the last one was hired today, as a matter of fact, because our, one of our high school music teachers relocated to Maine and told us about two weeks ago, so we just hired someone today to take that place. So, actually now it's nineteen people. And it was a busy hectic summer, but the custodial staff and everything and everyone got everything done. It was ready for teachers to come back today and it was a little shorter because we got out a little later with four snow days and we started before Labor Day, so they had a little crunch time, but they did a great job as usual. And so, I'm sure Julie will want to take a nice, well-deserved vacation after school gets up and running. As far as back to school, so we had the teachers come today, grades one through twelve come tomorrow and kindergarten, they actually get an extra day of screening and getting their classrooms ready and getting ready with the parents because a week from Tuesday is the primary, so we won't have any school at the Spring Street School, so they actually will start a week from Wednesday. But we're ready for grades one through twelve tomorrow and the teachers had a great day today. Each school did a kind of team-building scavenger hunt with all the teachers this morning and they put them in teams and they had to go around town and find different things and it was actually kind of fun to see everyone running around and smiling and it's amazing how when you do a challenge like that, how competitive people get and I was worth, a picture with me was worth twenty-five points, so I'm just saying. That was a good one. But I don't know if, did we get the winners at the schools? Do we know who won at each school?
We do. Two groups won. We gave out two, first and second class.
Okay. And Spring Street?
Yeah, we do. Who are the schools at now? When is it tomorrow?
So, Howard, Roselle.
My teams were way too close. I gotta double check.
And we have to make sure because I heard someone was thinking they were getting points by getting a picture of me, like, with me, but no, they actually had to get me in person.
We even got some purple car.
Oh. See, so I will say they thought outside the box and they were creative, so that's something. But, so it was a good, good day. Everyone's ready to go and it's gonna be a great school year and this is how we welcomed, I put this on Facebook tonight and this is how we're welcoming everyone back. Let's see if I have this and if the sound, will the sound come up? Pay attention to the dancer on the right.
This is how we school it.
Think he's the director of student services.
This is how we school it. This is how we school it. It's time to school it. It's back to school and I feel so cool. Best students are here on the west side, so I reach for my notebook and I turn it. I look for my locker room combination. Run to class 'cause I'm pumped up. Move into the next grade 'cause we all got pumped up. It feels so good and we beat this year. The classes that I had and the teachers too. Oh, what makes the school here the best for me and you. Finish summer reading before you get to class. So, where you on my room? Well, I'll be friends soon and let me hear the wild cats say. We're all birds and it's all because. This is how we school it. We beat doesn't like nobody does. This is how we school it. To all the neighbors, we got more flavor. This is how we school it. It's just a bad walk, cats on a leash. This is how we school it. We're all birds and it's all because. This is how we school it. We beat doesn't like nobody does. This is how we school it. To all the neighbors, we got more flavor. This is how we school it. It's just a bad walk, cats on a leash. Check it out, once upon a time in old VV, there was a head of sports who wasn't groovy, but Oakley came and all was good. Those baby kids are learning just like they should. We got the best teachers from all around with the best students that ever were found. English, history, science, fine arts and math. Every kid's successful, no matter what they've had. All we've got's envy, come. This is how we school it. We beat doesn't like nobody does. This is how we school it. To all the neighbors, we got more flavor. This is how we school it. It's just a bad walk, cats on a leash. This is how we school it. We're all birds and it's all because. This is how we school it. We beat doesn't like nobody does. This is how we school it. To all the neighbors, we got more flavor. This is how we school it. It's just a bad walk, cats on a leash. This is how we school it. This is how we school it. Walk, cats on a leash.
This is how we do it.
My favorite part.
That's awesome. Yeah, when you got the moves, right?
No one talks to me though.
So, that's hopefully getting people pumped up to come to school tomorrow, so let's put it out there and have some fun. Anything else about going back today? I don't know, any of the principals, how it went or?
It was a great day. I'm very excited to be back and I can follow through with great you.
Awesome.
I had a cheap crowd, really good atmosphere.
Awesome. All right. Howard roof project, just a quick update. We had gone to the town meeting in June and we could not vote on an article because we hadn't actually been accepted into the program from the MSBA at the time. Since then, of course, two weeks after that, they accepted us into the program and we need to have a feasibility schematic design study for the gym roof, so we figured out with the MSBA, they think that it will cost between forty-five and fifty thousand dollars to get that done and then we'll have to thirty days, excuse me, ninety days after that's done, then go to the town and see if they'll vote to give us the money to actually do the roof project. So, I talked to David Gagny and it was, we just didn't have enough time to have a special town meeting in order to get the money for the feasibility study, partly because it was a quick timeframe in the summer, but the other part was we don't have a regular town moderator right now, so it's hard to have special town meetings. So, he had looked back and said that when we went for the Spring Street roof, we actually took the money out of our budget to pay for the feasibility study and then after the first of the year, when the town voted to appropriate the funds for the roof, they gave it back to us and it was all under the whole project. So, that's what we're doing with this also. So, we're hoping that where it's a small area, the feasibility and schematic design will get done quicker and then, he said, late in the fall, early or in the winter, then they could probably call a special town meeting for that so that we can get them to start it over the summer and finish it over the summer, because this is an accelerated repair project. This isn't, you don't have to go through the same rules and regulations and policies as you do when you do a big building project. They actually assign us the OPM and the architect and they like to get it done within a year. So, if everything works out like it did with Spring Street, the day the kids leave in June, they start the roof and then it's done by the time they come back. So, that's where we're at for that. Some of the paperwork had to be in today. The next round of paperwork has to be in by September 27. Julie Hamlin and I are going to a meeting at the MSBA September 7th or 11th or something like that, just to make sure that we're doing all the things that we need to do. And that's my update.
And just to clarify, it's just the gym?
Just the gym roof. The Howard School roof was done several years ago. The gym roof was never done and it was, the gym was the one area back in the late eighties, early nineties, I think it was early nineties, that was not renovated. They didn't touch the gym. They basically gutted the whole rest of the building, but they didn't do anything in the gym and then that roof was not done when we did the roof project, so this is the last one and, I mean, if you've seen it especially, you could see it from the inside. So, it has to be done inside and out, not just, so it makes it a little more expensive because of the inside. Any questions? All right. Me again. Quick presentation for me. Planning for success. I just want to give this draft out of our planning for success, our strategic planning process. There were a few of you that came to our initial planning meeting on June 22nd where we took the three pillars of success, which are rigorous and relevant curriculum, professional practice, and student support, wellness, and safety. We worked on the strategic objectives and then brainstormed strategic initiatives for this plan, which is gonna take place over the next three to five years. This is a different process than we did for many years with strategic planning and it's recommended by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It streamlines the process, it makes it more action-oriented, whereas the old type of strategic planning was a lot, it was kind of convoluted and burdensome at points because you had a big mission, a vision, and you also had initiatives, but you never really kind of got to where the rubber hits the road, which is the action to make it happen. So, you can see on the handout that I gave you that we have three strategic objectives. One, to provide consistent, rigorous curriculum, to prepare our students with the knowledge and skills necessary to be successful in college, career, and life. The second, to support the development of educators who utilize data, professional development, and collaboration to continually enhance instruction to improve student learning. And the third one, to provide an environment that supports the physical, social, emotional, mental, behavioral, and wellness of all students. And under those three strategic objectives, the groups got together, split up, and came up with strategic initiative. You can see that there's five, four or five under each objective. It's a three to five-year plan. This would be overwhelming if you had to do every single thing and write an action plan for all of them in year one. That's not going to happen. We're gonna meet on October 17th at four o'clock at the middle, senior, high school with that same group that met June 22nd and anyone else that wants to come and join us and actually finalize these initiatives and write action plans and make a decision on, okay, what do we feel should be this year, what's next year, what, and so on and so forth. And we'll be meeting several times throughout this year so that we'll have this in place and ready to go. So, you can see at the top, this is just a draft, but I just wanted to give you some indication of where we were in the process, since it was one of my goals last year, to change up our strategic planning process and move it ahead. So, anybody that is interested in the community, parents, other teachers, administrators, anyone that wants to come on that October 17th, we can put you in one of the groups and it was a good working group on the 22nd, so I'm looking forward to really making this happen and then really having the actions to take place. The other thing that this does that we lacked before was the connection between school committee goals, district goals, and school improvement goals for each school. This way, it will be all the same goals. So, they'll funnel down, there'll be actions that the school improvement plans will actually work on, the principals and their school improvement councils will actually be taking these and working on them instead of coming up with their own things that don't connect. So, that's why I encourage anybody that's on any of the school improvement councils to come to this meeting because then it will be an extension that you'll be working on so you're not doing double duty and saying, well, we're doing this over here, but it doesn't align with the district and that makes no sense. And that's what, that's what we were finding was happening and I know, Mrs. Sullivan, you've always been at all of our strategic planning and we talked about it and that's what you found was happening, so.
Yeah, you had a perfect way of really just having everything just now be connected, so it's gonna be incredible once it starts taking, you know, taking effect.
Yeah, and it really gives us a plan for the next three to five years.
Yep.
To ensure success for the school system, so. Any questions on that? All right.
Athletic night, Mrs. Hamlin?
Well, first of all, thank you and welcome and I just have to do a quick shout-out to our school committee, to Dr. Oakley, to Mark Bodwell, our principal. There's so many things that go into athletics and it could not take part without all our wheels in motion and everybody working together, so thank you so much. We are so pumped. We have an athletic informational night this Wednesday, 6:00 PM, and this is a great opportunity for parents and students to kind of come out and get some information about our athletic programs, but also some topics being, you know, discussed will be kind of some frequently asked questions in the athletic office or frequently things that I come across with communication, you know, kind of with coaches and student athletes and parents, just, you know, working on that. And we also have our boosters. Boosters will be coming in, our booster president will be there, they'll be able to talk about things that are going on with boosters, what they're offering, what are, what they need for our student athletes and parents. We also have a guest speaker, Dr., forgive me, I forget. And we have Audra Robbins, who's our trainer, Dr. McCormick, I apologize, Dr. McCormick, and he's gonna come and he's gonna discuss concussions, you know, healthy habits and hydration and nutrition. We also have Audra Robbins, who's our trainer, who is absolutely awesome and amazing, so a wealth of information and knowledge. We are lucky to have her on, on the staff. Some other topics will be our schedules, how are we getting them out there, how people are gonna find out about games, definitely working on our school website, Twitter's a great resource to go to for information and so some more information about that. I'll also be talking a little bit about concussions. I do, I feel it's a very important topic and we just need to be aware and so, again, just kind of reiterating that topic. And some of our athletic handbook policies, I think it's important to kind of go in, kind of look at them and remind, it's a great access for questions, again, that come up with parents, whether it's academic, athletic, or whatnot. So, just kind of showing people where to go on the website to even find that, so they know where that information is. I think it's, it will be really, really helpful. Also kind of discussing some, you know, MIA rules and regulations. Our bona fide team rule, we have our chemical health violations, our chemical health rule of the MIA. Again, it's just important to get it out there for parents and those are things that they come up with throughout the season, so getting that information out there is important so people aren't surprised when things happen unexpectedly. And again, I think a couple of things that we're talking about, again, I talked about communication, but it's just other things like physical notes, medical notes that we kind of come along and I'm gonna try to help direct parents and get that information out there the best I can, so if there's any questions. But again, this is an awesome opportunity for parents and our students, all students, all parents, to come on out. Our coaches are gonna be there, it's a great opportunity to meet them individually and they are gonna come and talk about all of their expectations and what, you know, they expect throughout the season, but again, awesome night and I look forward to it. So, it's this Wednesday, 6:00 PM, here at the West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School, so come on out, we need you, let's do this. You guys have any questions for me?
Mrs. Hamlin, I do have a quick question. Is this a mandatory attendance?
This is a mandatory attendance, one parent and the student, yes.
And it's not just the fall athletes, it's all athletes, but with respect to fall athletes, is that mandatory for them to now participate?
Yes.
Since this is the season?
They communicate through the coaching staff.
Yes.
One of those.
Correct. And it's open to all, all students and parents as well, but we are mandating, yeah, it's mandatory for.
And are there gonna be opportunities, is it gonna be recorded so that if the parents cannot make it?
Yes, I think that's, absolutely. I think it's a great resource to have, you know, for parents to be able to go back and look on. There'll be a lot of great information in there to go to, so absolutely, absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, you got it, of course, of course. Thanks so much.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much. Our school resource officer, Officer Thaxter, and Chief Flaherty.
I know I have to go to the podium.
We don't wanna scare you.
I don't get out into the, into my message, "chair," but, but I just wanted to stop into, first thing I gotta say is that since August 1st, we've been working really hard with both the staff here, Dr. Oakley, and all I can say is it's been excellent. The board has to know how helpful they are, 'cause change is difficult. We, I've had more meetings with Dr. Oakley this year than anything than ever, but, but like I said, it's been unbelievable. I can't say enough about, you know, all the help, you know, because basically I, you know, put us, that sort of tough thing for this month because I wanted a baseline plan. I wanted something day one that we have a base of what we want to do and the two things I really wanted to know is identification and visitors. We need to know who's in the schools. So, baseline, you know, day one, it's gonna take a few years to get us all to go where we need to go and we need to move improvements, but we needed a baseline and we got to that point. We do have some policies and some procedural things that you guys, I'm sure you've seen, gone over multiple times. The, what I want to do this year is basically have one point of entry. I know it's a big deal. I know we've talked to all the principals here and they said, well, why we do this, parent pickup. I've learned a lot about what a walker is. A walker can be a walker, a parent pickup, I call it a valet, parking, but I mean, I call a lot of things, because we've always done it this way. And I put it to them easily, is it convenient, is it necessary, and is it more secure? Most of the things that the schools have done is to be more convenient, we're trying to be more convenient. Unfortunately, it's not my role. I'm not, I'm trying to make it so that we, everybody can get in and out, traffic patterns, but my concern is the safety of the school, safety of everybody in it. The traffic patterns, we will work with. We're here now, we're going to do everything we can to resolve some of these traffic things that haven't been looked at, we're gonna do that, but, and we're gonna be out in force tomorrow, we're gonna have a lot of people here helping. We're gonna retrain a lot of people in the traffic pattern and I think it's gonna be good because they're gonna see, they don't have to come in at 2:15 and wait an hour for their child. I mean, that's just crazy to me, you know, so we're gonna make it easier pattern for people to come in and out. So, just everybody that's watching this, just be patient, 'cause we're gonna try to make it better, but I'll tell you what, we already made it safer. And I call it, what I call is natural surveillance. Before, we used to have one, two, three doors we let people out and you had two staff at each door helping. My thing is we bring it to one door, now instead of having two staff here, two staff here, two staff here, I have six right here. Six is, six sets of eyes instead of two. It's a natural surveillance, it's people watching and that's what we gotta try to do because Officer Thaxter's not good at this as long, we need everybody to kind of be that natural surveillance, to see things, you know, so if we have more people watching in one area instead of spreading people around, it's gonna be more secure. One of the things that we want to change, not change, this Howard School has a pretty good setup there. We need a little bit of money to, to the second door, so when you come in, we're changing the glass and the lap so that the person can scan licenses and let everybody in the visitor passes, but the second door is locked, so they can't come into the school until we, you know, they're buzzed in or what have you. A little bit of money involved. I'll be going to one of the boards to ask for a little money for this, the Building Needs Committee. So, if you know anybody on the Building Needs Committee, make sure we say something.
Educate them.
We're gonna educate them because I think it's a, I think it's really necessary and it's not a lot of money, you know, looking at it, so we have the quotes, I'm gonna be approaching them soon, so, like I said, we have a lot to do, but I think we have a baseline. I'm gonna let Officer Thaxter give you the particulars on it, but like I said, I just wanna thank everybody for the cooperation, it was really, really good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
As Chief Flaherty said, everybody's been really great about working to this. I'm glad to be aboard, really looking forward to the year. One of the specific things we're addressing is to the chief's point about IDing who's in the school. We're gonna try to, we've already got at the high school a scanner set up, so for folks that are coming into the school, if you're, if you were accustomed before to coming in the main door and then going around to like into the office to mill around, for the most part, parents aren't gonna do that anymore. So, if they're bringing the golf clubs for their, their son or something, they're gonna leave them in the Sally Poole, we're gonna call the student down and get them, so that the perimeter of the school is always secure. Now, we do want to be open and people do have to come into the school and so we've got a scanner system set up where we're, our goal is to get a, an ID machine and actually have printed IDs for folks like yourselves, like school committee folks who are there all the time, 'cause we're really gonna try to make sure that everybody that's in the school has some sort of an ID on at all times. We're gonna, we're gonna look to get the students, when, when life touches here, they're gonna give the students their IDs, we're gonna encourage that they wear them, we're gonna encourage that staff wears them, and then we're gonna have visitor IDs and we're gonna, at some point, like yourself, the school committee would come over to me, we'd give you a, a school ID with your photo on it and then you can come into any school you want. Vendors are gonna get the same thing, so that, so that at any time, we know who is in the school. And if there's a parent that needs to visit, that's great, they're gonna come in, they're gonna scan their license, they're gonna sign in, we're gonna know who they are and we're gonna accompany them to where they go. So, that's a, that's a change that, I don't think it'll affect students or staff at all. I think it might be, to the chief's point, a little bit of a convenience thing for parents and I know a lot of parents that have been in the system a while, you know, they, they know the secretaries and, hey, how you doing, you know, and we're really gonna try to say, listen, we encourage you to be here. If you want to come here more often, we'll get you a visitor's pass. Go over to the, go over and get quarried and we'll get that and other than that, we just, we're gonna keep the secure perimeter of the school secure. And that's something Chief, to the chief pointed out at the Howard School, right away, the footprint is there to do it, we just need a couple of enhancements, locks and windows. And the high school, it's already there, so, and we're working on the other schools and that's, that explains why the other schools have one point of entry now, so. But yeah, I'm very excited to get going, the staff has been great, Julie Hamlin has been amazing about stuff that I've needed, John Collins is like ahead of me, like I can't even catch him. He's, he's got a scanner up, we're already scanning, so things have really moved very quickly and that's to the credit of, of your staff, Dr. Oakley, because they're moving ahead. And I know the chief and I have said, you know, we've gone in and we've kind of like upset some apple carts, but we've got the apples back in the cart and we're, and we're looking forward to getting going and I'm looking forward to tomorrow, so. And if there's any specific questions, everyone, I know all you guys and you all know how to get, get ahold of me if you need to, so by all means, anything specific or concerns, hopefully very soon you'll all be having your proud West Bridgewater ID and that's where we're heading.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
On to business, homeschool applications, Mr. Michael Azak.
He's good.
In your package, in your package you have a list of seventeen homeschool applicants for the seventh, for the eighteen-making school year. We reviewed all applications and they do align with district policy, so it's my recommendation that the school committee approve.
Like to make a motion, anybody to?
Moved.
Second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Really nervous.
Were you nervous?
Okay, now just get up and show them some of your dance moves.
No.
Come on. Come on. I'll count for you. I'll say left, right.
In the background.
Elementary student handbook, Ms. Galley, and our newest principal, Mr. McLaughlin, welcome.
So, this year, we made very limited changes to the handbook. As you can see, there are basically just title changes. Mr. McLaughlin, we did a slight change to the time at the Howard.
There was one change that we're going to be opening, typically, we open the doors at seven forty-five in the morning to let kids in. We're going to change that to seven fifty, in that, that's when our staff is on duty in the morning, so it made sense to, that's when we let our kids in the door, so that they're properly supervised. So, at seven fifty, we'll open the doors, and for drop-offs, the kids can come in and go directly to their homeroom. Buses, we'll still let the kids off before that, and we'll have them in the cafeteria with a staff member, but the majority of the kids that get dropped off or walk will come in at seven fifty.
Would somebody like to make a motion to accept the changes?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
To Middle Senior High School student and athletic handbooks, Mr. Bodwell.
Yeah, I've just had one change, it really had to do with honors breakfast. Before honors breakfast for the winter, counted the previous year's fourth quarter and first quarter, because they have to have two consecutive quarters on honor roll to make honors breakfast. So, four and one, or one and two. And the spring is always two and three. For the winter honors breakfast, we got rid of four, so it's just one and two. We felt that it can be a little bit problematic, because you're pulling from either sixth grade or from visiting schools, and we really felt, well, why not just, if it's for that year, let's keep that honor to get invited to the honors breakfast within the school year. So, it's just, for the winter, they become eligible for getting the honor roll quarters one and two, and the spring quarters, two and three.
Motion to accept from Mr. Bodwell?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Assignment of policies, update of the Mass School Committee overview, Mrs. Hume and Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes. Donna and I, we, towards the end of the school year, we worked, we spent a lot of time just trying to get into a system that Donna and I can work well with and have the policies fit into this new indexing plan. So, we made some significant progress, so we're just going to pick it back up. We took about a month off for the summer, we're going to pick it back up, and hopefully in the next cycle of policies that are due, we're just going to start integrating the new format, as well as the new indexing and the rules and where each policy is going to fit. And we're still going to continue to make each policy, you know, applicable to WB, not just take the MASCE's overview, and we're just going to still specialize it and put the WB touch on it. So, we're just going to pick that back up, and we'll meet with the representative. We'll have Kim send an email, and probably do that in the next couple of weeks. So, we're back on track.
Now, we already in with them, so that, I know one of the reasons for doing this was, after you get them all set, if a new policy comes out, or a new mandate from the state, that MASCE then would send us the policy.
Yes.
So, that we're already updated. So, if something happened, you know, next week, are we already, we will, we'll get those?
We're getting those, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Awesome.
I think the only thing that was left to be decided on, and it would be a vote for the school committee, would be whether or not to have the MASCE put it online.
I think we determined that in the contract that it was included.
That was in the contract.
Yeah.
Okay, so that was the only question that we had?
Yep.
Okay, so, that was part of that.
Thank you very much, a lot of work. Thank you very much.
Yeah. So, will they wait to put it online until they're all done?
Yes, yep.
No policies, no warrants, public forum. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee, may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student confidentiality cannot be addressed during the public forum. Not everybody wants. All right, our announcements here. The first day of school for students and teachers, August twenty-seventh, the teacher's first day. August twenty-eighth, grades one through twelve. September fifth, pre-K and K. Is that right, fifth, or is it the sixth?
Yep.
PTO, September twenty-fifth, Howard Library, offering babysitting. The music boosters, September fourth, six thirty to eight thirty, in the Middle Senior High School Band Room. Athletic boosters, September fifth, seven to eight thirty, in the Middle Senior High School Teachers Room. Inclusion Matters, October second, six to seven thirty, the Middle Senior High School Learning Commons. District-wide, August thirtieth, half-day, grades one through twelve. August thirty-first, no school. September third, Labor Day, no school. At the Middle Senior High School, August twenty-ninth, Athletic Night, six p.m., Middle Senior High School. September thirteenth is Curriculum Night, grades seven and eight are from five to six thirty. Grades nine through twelve are six forty-five through eight fifteen. September twelfth, Citizens Police Academy, six to nine o'clock, Middle Senior High School Learning Commons. At the Spring Street School, August twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, kindergarten assessments. August twenty-ninth, pre-K orientation at two p.m. And August thirtieth, kindergarten orientation, nine a.m. And our first home games for our varsity athletic fall teams. September fifth, the Varsity Boys Soccer Team will play Middleborough at three thirty p.m. September sixth, the Golf Team will play Southeast and Regional at two forty-five. Actually, we're going to be over at the Howard for soccer, and we'll be at Riverbend for the golf. Girls' soccer will also, on September seventh, be at the Howard School against BR at three thirty. September seventh, Varsity JV Field Hockey will open up against Westport out here on the turf field at three thirty. September tenth, Varsity JV Volleyball against Atlantic Charter will be at four p.m. here in the gym. September eleventh, the cross-country meet against BR will be at three thirty, and that's here on campus.
Yep.
And September twenty-first, our Varsity Football Team will be against Martha's Vineyard here at six thirty p.m. out on the football field. Our next regular school committee meeting is Monday, September seventeenth, at six thirty in the Middle Senior High School Learning Commons. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So, moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.